Still around.
You too, buddy.
I haven't got rings yet.
How you doing?
So we, uh, what do you think we have to do?
Were you a CMO?
No.
Well, it's over.
No, I'm not. I'm trying to find the way.
Oh.
Well, I had to do this.
Okay. What you doing there?
So I'm going to.
I said, bro.
Believe me.
So you're bowling?
Well, actually, this is. I'm trying.
What's your average?
Uh, it's like one sixty five.
Yeah.
I got it. Same as I did. See that last year.
But you had a good time.
I couldn't even be my brother's team and he can't hold.
Oh.
He got me. He had lots of fights.
Not that you had a good time, though.
Madam Mayor, I have Terrence Kelly online.
Start off with an introduction from our interpreter, please.
So, good afternoon, everybody. I'm Andrea with the Community Language Cooperative. We're going to be practicing language justice. We're going to have simultaneous interpretation in English and in Spanish. And if you are on Zoom, once we turn on the interpretation, you're going to see a globe that is going to come up at the bottom of your screen. Please make sure that you click that globe and select your preferred language. If you speak both languages, you don't need to select any, and you can always speak in whichever of those two you feel more comfortable. Please remember to speak conversationally, speak very close to your microphone, and guide me into the page in your packet that you're at. Hola a todos, soy Andrea con la Community Language Cooperative. Vamos a estar practicando la justicia del lenguaje. Tendremos interpretación simultánea en inglés y en español. Una vez que aprendamos de interpretación, por favor, denle clic al globo que va a aparecer en la parte inferior de su pantalla de Zoom o a los tres puntitos donde dice más si están en su teléfono o tableta. And thank you, we can begin interpretation now.
Thank you. Okay, I'll call this work session for the Sheridan City Council order at 6:08 PM. And we have, uh, can we do a roll call? Let's do that.
Uh, Councilor.
Present.
Councilor today. Councilmember Kelly.
Councilmember Kelly, sorry.
Yeah, here, can you hear me, guys?
Yes, we can.
Yes, I'm here.
Mayor Byderfler, here. Councilmember Whitaker. Lopez.
Here.
Camacho.
Here.
Thank you.
You have a quorum.
All right, our topic tonight is our residential trash service. Who wants to kick it off?
I will, I will do that, Mayor. Um, just let me get to the right spot. Oops. Things opened here. Okay, first off, a little bit of housekeeping. The memo that went out to you from me was dated June 6, 2019. So obviously, that was the wrong memo that got included into that.
I thought maybe you were just gonna be like, oh, it's all the same.
Yeah, no, no. So obviously, I went back and was doing my homework and looking at what I had written to you guys previously. Um, and I used that as a template to then write a new memo. But I obviously did not save over it, sent it to Jenna, said it's good for the packet, and that's how it got in there. So my apologies for that. You should have, Jenna sent out a revised memo. Um, and also you should have a hard copy as well. Um, so please follow along with either the revised or the hard copy that you have there. Um, so, uh, I know this is the first time talking trash um, for some of our council members. So I kind of thought I'd start at the beginning and just do a very, very brief history of, of how we got to where we are today, um, what we're doing right now with, uh, moving forward with a, an extension and how all of that will work. So in, um, actually, uh, before I was even hired by the city, the council had been talking about putting, um, uh, residential trash collection uh, out for bid for years and years before I got here. I'm sorry, 2002, was it, Randy? So yeah, it was a good ten years before I was hired. Um, so the, 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 uh, the, the topic kind of came and went, and there was discussions about it. And, uh, the Nefen really, um, came to a fore about that. Um, when I got hired by the council, uh, the council basically told me, you know, here's your, like, top five things. Four of those was fix the streets and then trash. So, um, we started on the process, um, for, um, putting out an RFP for residential trash service. That whole process is mandated by the state, uh, as to what you have to do. You can't just kind of go out, issue an RFP on your own, using your own kind of process, whatever you're, you're used to doing. State statute spells out a very specific, um, um, program and list of requirements that you have to follow when you look at contracting for your residential trash service. The entire process takes the better part of a year to go through it. There's all kinds of notifications that have to go out to vendors. There's notifications that have to go out to the customers. Um, there's waiting periods, there's public hearings, there's quite a bit that goes into it, and it's all prescribed in state statute. So it's a very involved process to go through. We did that process. Um, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head how many bidders we had. We probably had, I think, around, well, it basically came down to two bids that were qualified as responsible type bids. We received some others, but they didn't necessarily address the entire, um, qualifications that were requested in the RFP. So it, it came down at the time between, uh, Waste Management and Republic Services. Those were the two, um, responding, um, RFPs that we received. The council selected, um, Republic. And, um, we began service then in April of 2014, March, April, something about around that time in 2014. Um, I will tell you, and, uh, any council or any city that goes to this will tell you that the first year is rough, and the first year was rough. It's hard, people don't like change, it's difficult to get used to change, lots of questions, um, uh, all, all, everything you can imagine. And, uh, the, the good thing was is that I think the council was prepared, staff was prepared, we knew that it was gonna be a little rough. We'd heard it from every city we talked to who went through this process, said, "Your first year is gonna be tough, but it gets better." And it has, it's gotten considerably better. So, um, our contracts are set up as a series of five-year contracts. Um, the very first one is included in your, in your packet there, so you could look through it and glass kind of become familiar with, you know, what goes into, um, uh, the contracts. The, um, uh, trying to see where I go from here on this now. Um, the, uh, original contract had a formula that was based on Boulder-Denver CPI and a number of other factors that were rolled in there. Uh, Mark and I still, uh, laugh every time we think about that first formula we had. It was, we, we barely understood how to do it. It's just, oh, we would have to run it by three or four different people to say, "Did we do this right?" Um, because it was very, very convoluted. Um, what you'll see now is that the, the, the second five-year contract was a significant improvement on that. And I think the, the next contract we're bringing for you is even simpler as far as how we'll, we'll do that, and I'll get into that in just a second. Um, but it laid out, uh, what our, uh, rates were. It raid, it laid out all the services that were gonna be provided. Um, some of the, the things that are notable is that when you, um, look at contracting for this kind of a service, you have to make a series of decisions on, you know, what level of service is gonna be provided by the contractor and what level of service is gonna be provided by the city, if any. Um, so, um, we here do not, um, at the city level, um, perform the billing aspect. Um, some cities will, they'll hang on to the billing aspect of that um, and bill, um, through the city and operate the, um, the, um, the contract as a, as an enterprise, so that it's self-sustaining. Um, we do not do that. We elected to have, uh, uh, the billing covered by Republic and their staff to do the billing, um, and the customer service side of things. So, um, there is also a fee that gets collected as part of the trash. You've probably seen it in there. Um, it's five dollars, something, I think, right now that is an administrative fee, and that covers the billing aspects, uh, of the contract. Um, it would have to be covered one way or the other. It's just making a decision, are you gonna charge it through the city? Are you gonna charge it through, uh, the contractor? Um, we elected to do that, so we didn't have to hire anybody. We didn't, we would have had to hire somebody to come on and do that. It lays out, uh, the costs for carts, um, what all is included with those, um, the sizes that we have, the, um, sizes for both trash collection and recycling, uh, and then also laid out a number of events that we have in there. So we have, um, provisions in the contract for doing curbside, uh, collection of yard waste. We have, as you guys are all aware, um, we also have provisions in there for doing bulk drop-off events, e-recycling, uh, those types of thing like that are all included in that contract. And so those are the things that we, uh, those are the main things that we consider, uh, every five years when we, we look into this. Um, the, the second five years, um, we look at, um, the possibility of putting the RFP out again and seeing if there would be interest. Um, although everybody that I reached out to, um, that we had, uh, reached out to five years before that, um, none of them were interested in providing a bid. I asked them if, if we put this together and sent it out, would you be interested in participating? And nobody said yes, that they would be. I don't know specifically why that might be unless they felt they couldn't be competitive. They felt that we were too small and it wasn't worth their time. Um, in, any number of factors, um, it could have been on that, but nobody really gave me a, uh, you know, a very definitive saying, "Well, no, we're not gonna do this because of this." But it was just like, "Thank you for asking, but no, we're not really interested." Um, and that's why, um, I've recommended that this time around, um, that we not, um, necessarily look at doing an RFP. I don't see that the market would have changed much. Um, two, um, we're receiving excellent service from Republic. We're ten years in now, um, have a very good working relationship with Republic. People are used to it. Um, and we have incredibly, um, uh, competitive rates. Um, I'm not sure that we could, uh, go out and get better rates. And Mark and I were talking, and before I point to Mark again and say Mark without introducing him, this is Mark Petrovich. Mark is our contact, um, with Republic, and, and he's who I work with anytime that we have, uh, a, a contract issue or we have a customer service issue, um, anything along those. He's our, our main contact over there. Uh, and I'm gonna give Mark some chance to talk here in a little bit and answer any questions that you guys might have as well. So, um, so we, um, uh, I was talking about the RFP process. Um, we, um, uh, Mark and I were speaking earlier that, let's say that the city was to go on to an RFP process and Republic, would they, you know, they would want to respond to that. They're our current service provider, but however, they'd have to go through a whole new pro forma model to give us a quote. Um, and that might take into account numerous factors that might not even let them get to where they are today with the rates that they're able to charge us, which has still been controlled over ten years of our formula and our cap. And so are still based on that starting point back in 2014. A new RFP would, would, would necessitate a new starting point. And so there's no guarantee that we'd be able to continue on right with where our rates are right now. Um, and then I've also mentioned this to you guys. If we don't get, if, if it just ends up being Republic that's responsive to our bids, that puts us in a, in a, in a not very good, um, position, not a good negotiating position, um, for a new contract. So, uh, those are the number of reasons why I've not recommended that we've, uh, put this out to bid again, um, that we pursue instead an amendment or a new amended five-year contract, uh, with Republic. Now, um, going into my memo here a little bit, I need to correct something. Mark and I figured out that we weren't quite on the same page, um, when we were discussing, um, our, um, well, let me, let me just start from the beginning with, uh, some of the bullet points in the memo. Um, you'll see that Republic Services, right now, we have a three percent cap, three percent annual cap, um, that's built into our contract. And Republic is no longer offering that or renewing any of their contracts with their municipal partners with that, uh, cap. I'll kind of let Mark speak to that, what the rationale behind that is. Um, so the, uh, moving forward, we would not have that three percent cap in place. Uh, and our, our, our formula was a little bit unique in, in that with a five-year contracts, the first two that we had, the first two years of the five-year contract were established and held in place. So if it was nineteen ninety-five, whatever, it would be nineteen ninety-five for a large cart for year one and year two. Then years three, four, and five would be eligible for adjustment per the formula that we had in the contract, which was some mix of CPI, um, Denver Boulder CPI modified by a bunch of different things. Um, so then years three, four, and five, they could realize rate increases. And then as we then, we'd go to another five-year period, and it would be years one and two held again, and then three, four, five eligible for, uh, rate increases. Um, we're, they're not gonna be offering, um, that. And that's when we, when I first wrote the memo and, and Mark and I first taught, we're talking, um, I was under the impression that, um, and I think we just misunderstood each other, that we would do away with the three percent cap. I got that, but I was still under the impression that we'd maybe still have the, you want years one and two held at whatever rate that would be. Um, they're not offering that, and again, I'll, I'll ask Mark to kind of talk about that. But it, it has to do with moving into, um, a new rate model. Um, and also, you know, we were just in our volunteer fire pension board meeting talking about in, uh, inflation and what has happened with that. Well, they've been hit, um, significantly, uh, by inflationary costs, um, by labor costs, um, things like that. And, and Mark can kind of speak to, you know, what they've seen as far as their costs increase and, and how that relates to, um, our, um, rate increases. So, um, it would be all of those, those, uh, like, second and third, um, bullet points will be replaced, um, and, um, would, it would instill, instead of the, uh, the rates would be eligible for adjustment based on the US city average water sewer trash collection rates, um, for all five years of the contract. Okay? What we're seeing that in this, uh, index is that it seems to be a fairly stable index. CPI can fluctuate very significantly from year to year. Um, and included in your packet, you have, uh, a breakdown of that, uh, index that comes from the Bureau of Labor Statistics. And you can see it's a little bit more of a stable index. Uh, doesn't fluctuate quite as much as CPI. And, and I've seen, at least from what Mark was sharing with us and what I've seen, it's been regularly in the three to four percent range and maybe fluctuates up to six percent or so, uh, depending on the year, but has been fairly, fairly steady, uh, and has not been as wild as, as CPI. So I think that that, um, provides a little bit more predictability, not only for the city but for Republic, um, when they're working through, um, and putting their plans together each year as well as the city for our budget and as well as our customers for having an idea where they're gonna be as far as rates on a year-to-year basis. Um, some new things, and, and Republic does recognize that, okay, not offering the, the three percent cap and not offering the, you know, hold on one and two years is, um, a loss for the city um, and for their municipal partners. So, uh, Mark has been able to work some, uh, and offering some, uh, additional incentives in our contract, um, a lot of them around roll-offs and providing, uh, roll-offs for city events, um, such as city pickup and, and, uh, beautification, neighborhood beautification events, um, allowing, uh, residents, uh, to rent, um, roll-offs at city rates, which is a, a nice savings for them. Um, right now, um, when we do our, our events, such as our, our, um, bulk drop-off event and e-recycling, um, Republic provides, um, three, um, roll-offs, I think for each one of those events, I think is right, Mark. And so those are included in the cost. We regularly go over that because they're so popular. Um, but this would help offset some of those potentially as well. And all those events will continue as well. So the bulk collection yard waste, e-recycling, all those events will continue. Um, I asked Mark to look at doing some, maybe some additional outreach, um, in both English and Spanish, um, through the newsletter and maybe some other, um, types of aspects along that. I think what we find, since we have a fairly, uh, transitory, uh, populace here, we have a lot of renters and, and, and a lot of turnover, that oftentimes people come in and they're new to the program and they don't understand what's going on. And so we'll do outreach and we'll do educational efforts, and we'll see a big spike in recycling and, and using that kind of thing, which is what we want to see. And then it, it kind of tends to tail down a little bit as, as people cycle through and move off. And then we'll do another outreach and it spikes back up again. So trying to keep our recycling rates high, um, doing that education and outreach, I think is important. Um, let's see, what else do we want to talk about? Um, when we talk about our rates, and there is a separate handout on that I gave everybody here that has a little breakdown of the rates, and it shows, um, our original rates, um, and how they compared to rates ten years later in 2024. What you'll see is it just a, a bit over ten percent increase over those ten years, which is pretty remarkable. Um, you'll, you'll see that, um, and if you talk to neighbors in, uh, Inglewood and Littleton, they've, uh, seen much more significant, uh, price increases over that timeframe than, uh, our, our folks have, uh, here in Sheridan. And it is due to the, um, to the contract, to the price caps and to the, to the model that we have, um, in that, um, in that contract. Um, you see, still very, very reasonable rates from where we were ten years ago. Um, and that goes into, you know, just some of the basis. And so why did we ever decide to do this in the first place? What were some of the, why did we want to, um, uh, enter a contract to do that? And it does have a number of benefits. As you can see with the rates, uh, it definitely benefits our customers with keeping the rates down low. Um, you get, um, single stream recycling that's built into the rate, so people get, um, recycling included in that. Generally, I think the last percentage I saw is in my memo here is around seventy-one percent or so of Sheridan customers participate in the curbside recycling program. That fluctuates, kind of like I said earlier. It kind of depends on how much outreach we've done recently and, and that participation rate can fluctuate a little bit. Um, but it's still fairly decent rates that we've seen, um, for recycling participation. When you look at, um, compares to other municipalities in the Denver metro area that don't have this kind of a program and don't have recycling included for free. So, uh, we still have better rates than, than a lot of those folks. Now, we don't beat Boulder County because nobody beats Boulder County, um, in their rates, but, um, we, we've come close a couple of times. Um, I talked about the bulk events, again, included. We do have a carryout service if people aren't physically able to, um, to do that and move their, um, bins back and forth. Um, that's included, um, with, uh, fewer trucks running through our neighborhood. We used to have track, track, our, little, uh, trash trucks running through every street every day, all day. Um, we had at least probably five, six, maybe more companies servicing, um, uh, running their trucks through our service, uh, through our, our city throughout a week. Now we only have them running through from one company on one day of the week, uh, which minimizes the impact to our streets. And a lot of those streets have been rebuilt, so that helps us with, um, preserving the value of our, um, our investment in our streets. Um, there's a, a multiple container options for residents. They can, uh, they have three, choice of three sizes. Um, and I, let me take a step way back to the beginning on here. We do have a minimum service level that is required for all citizens to participate. Otherwise, this program does not work. So that minimum, uh, participation rate, I think, started around six dollars. It's now at six, sixty-five a month. So whether they elect to participate in this program or not, and you can't force, under state law, you cannot force, say you have to take Republic Service for your trash. They can sign up with another trash service, but they must participate in our single vendor trash program here um, and pay their fair share into that piece of it there. Otherwise, it just, it doesn't work at all. Um, and we've had, and I've noticed, uh, I think one of the things that people like the most is, is that we have, do have cleaner neighborhoods and better appearances, especially on trash days. Well, we just, we have trash out on one day of the week and all the rest of that, the trash is put away, the containers are put away. Used to be out, trash all up and down the street, all the, every single day of the week. So, uh, our neighborhoods definitely, uh, have a better appearance. Um, I've rambled here a little bit. Um, I think maybe, Mark, I might turn it over to you. If you want to kind of talk about the cost side of, of things that you've, um, that you've, and then we can maybe turn it over for any questions that council might have. Again, we're not voting or doing anything on this tonight at our regular meeting. This is just an informational, um, opportunity to discuss, ask questions, and get up to speed.
Thank you, Devin. Uh, good evening, Mayor.
Hey.
Uh, City Council, my name's Mark Petrovich. I'm with Republic Services. Um, so, uh, thorough summary, uh, from Devin about the program, about how, what is staying the same and some things that are changing. So to get into some detail, um, about how we structured the pricing before and how the pricing is changing now. So ten years ago, when we did it, it was, it was acceptable and pretty common for us to have a, a cap on the rates. And three percent at the time seemed reasonable. And at that time, we were seeing one point eight, two percent, two point one CPI, pretty low numbers, and those were pretty consistent on the, uh, Denver Boulder Greeley, um, index. Go, uh, so the first two years were held, three years, you had those price increases. We got to the second contract, we cleaned up some of the confusing language, made it a little simpler, but we still had the cap and we still had the, um, price locked for two years. Now, when we move forward, anytime we get into long-term contracts, what may have worked at one point, as time progresses, things change, the economy changes, and so things need to be adjusted. And that's where we got into this, uh, new section where Devin and I have been, uh, discussing the new price increase. Now, we all know where the inflation went and the, the Denver Boulder Greeley CPI was seven, eight, nine percent thing along that line. Um, and then we were capped at three percent. So every year, our, uh, our costs to serve were outpacing the revenues. And that's not just Sheridan, that's not just Colorado, that's, that's nationwide that that happened. And so Republic had to reassess how we put these pricing models together, but we value the partnerships that we have with the city. So we wanted to make sure it was fair and equitable for everyone. So what Republic wanted, wants to do is change from the Denver Boulder Greeley or any kind of CPI along those lines. The problem with those indexes is they have so many factors that are in there that have nothing to do with our industry. Even if, if, uh, if, uh, food and energy are removed out of that, there are a lot of factors that can drive, uh, that number up or can drive it down, which really have nothing to do with us. And that's what happened when we got into that real inflationary market that you were seeing seven, eight, nine percent CPI, uh, where water sewer trash was in the five and a half to six percent, because that was really what our industry was seeing. So we think that's the correct index to use is the water sewer trash, because that's really indicative of what we are seeing in our industry. So we wanted to move to the water sewer trash so we don't have the highs and the lows on the CPI. And then we, uh, talked to Devin and we want to remove the two-year lock. The first year price is gonna be set, and then we'll get into the water sewer trash index from year two through five. And the reason being is when we hold it for those two years, we can just never catch up. And we're always, uh, outpacing our cost to serve than we are in the revenue. Now, when you look from when we started in 2014 to 2024, that's ten years on an average of a one percent a year. And that's because we had, at least two years were skipped through two different contract cycles. And you had that CPI that was falsely low at one point eight, one point nine, two point one, where at that time, uh, Devin and I were looking at it, the water sewer trash was three point four, three point six, a very reasonable rate, but not in the high ones and not in the low twos. So we think it's the right index to, to use. We think, uh, holding it for year one and then two through five is the appropriate way to go. It's, uh, it's fair to Republic and it's fair to the constituents, uh, of. is the appropriate way to go. It's, it's fair to Republic and it's fair to the constituents of Sheridan. The rates that we have are still very, very competitive. So Devin and I, as we worked through this, there were a couple of things that we wanted to make sure that stayed the same. The page you throw volume-based is going to say it's, you have 48% of your constituents that are in a 64 to 32 gallon container. Only 8% are in the 32. And then you have like 40, 42% that are in the 64. So right around 50% of your constituents take advantage of the lower priced and smaller trash container, whether they're an empty nester, an elderly living alone. However, however it divides out, they're, they don't have as much trash needs as the 96 gallons. So that program staying in place is very well-liked and it's utilized by, by your residents. We also do the curbside leaf and branch collection. So we do that in the spring and fall. We understand during those types of years, cleaning up the winter kill or in fall, folks have extra trash and there's no way to get rid of it if it's a page you throw volume-based program. So that program's not going anywhere. It's, it's very well-liked. The bulk pickups and the electronic recycle, that's staying the same. We do that twice a year. We just had an event here, it got busy. We had a line. Unfortunately, I think it baited onto the main road, but we really tried to work through that as quick as possible. But it was very, very popular. I think we went through about 15 roll-offs. So what we're keeping the same is each one of those events, we provide the first three for free. And then we're going to charge 300 bucks for each roll-off after that. And then we're also, Devin and I talked, and this is new, I think with the city, we're going to provide five 30-yard roll-offs and that's for your neighborhood and beautification projects that the city's doing. So we'll have five complimentary roll-offs that we'll coordinate through the city where those events are needed and, and we'll get that, we'll get that handled. I think everything else really is staying the same. Oh, the outreach. So the outreach that we do has a lot to do with the calendars and information or postcards about events coming up. But we're going to ramp that up a little bit to where we're going to put newsletters out and letting people know this is what you recycle, this is how you recycle. Because the rates recycling's embedded into it. There's not an additional fee. At 71%, that's good participation, but there's really no reason not to have 100% participation because they're already paying for it. They just need to ask for the cart and participate. There's no additional fee. So we'll do additional outreach in English and Spanish, which we do all the time to make sure that we're getting that information out. People know it's available and I think sometimes they just might forget. They don't realize, they might think it's an extra cost. So we'll do a little more outreach on that piece to get that information out there. We're staying with the multiple containers. We do have the carryout service. So really a lot is staying the same, some changes in the pricing. But when we look and compare to your neighbors and other municipal contracts, we are still in a very good spot, very competitive rates, service is good, people are used to the program, their trash is out on the right day. So I think things are rolling pretty smoothly. And at this point, because there are, are council members that are potentially new to this program or really haven't had a lot of discussions about trash, I would open it up if there are any questions about what we're talking about this evening or just about the program in general.
But do you have questions? You got something?
I've just got a comment. I, I look forward to, to getting more education out there to the citizens about recycling. I know a lot of my neighborhood, there's a big handful that do not recycle and, and I don't see why they, they shouldn't be participating in that.
Right.
Also, another thing I think would be helpful is to get out the information about the carryout service.
Okay.
I had a neighbor that was, had some difficulty getting out and, and getting that out there. So I would go out there or somebody from the neighborhood would try to get out. Couldn't always do it every time, but had we known about that service, we could have offered that to them and, and let them know. So.
Yeah. Very good point, counselor. And, and so that service is designed exactly what you said. It's not for convenience, it's for folks that have a difficulty or a disability getting it to the curb. And all we ask is that when the driver shows up, it's not inside a garage or behind a fence. If it's visible, the driver will go up, he'll bring it down, he'll service it, he'll put it back up where, where he took it. And it, there's no charge for that. That's just a, a convenience factor for, for someone to, I don't think there's a charge for it. Is there?
No, no, that's always, always been included in the service. As long as they could demonstrate the need for it. Yeah. We're not going to do it just for everybody who wants to, there's a need there. Yes.
And really in every city, it, it, it runs on an honor system. And, and drivers will let us know if it's a convenience factor. But generally if someone just calls and says, I have trouble getting it there, we'll get them set up. It'll be on the driver's route sheet and then we'll make sure we get them taken care of. But in the newsletter, that needs to be loud and clear that this is a service that's available for someone in need so that they're aware and they can call us and get that set up.
I think we should also make clear if this is true, that you could use it temporarily, like if you were laid up or something, right?
Sure. If you had surgery or something and said, I'm going to be, you know, I had hip surgery and I can't do it for three or four months, then sure, we can get that set up and then they let us know when they're, they're up and mobile. Yeah, absolutely.
And, and to both of your points, I think what we see in the recycling is, is, and I think there was a mayor touch, they, they don't know it's included. If you put, people think, well, I gotta pay for that. It's another cart. I gotta pay for that. No, it's included. And when we tell people that, the vast majority of them are like, oh. And they're like, there's no cost for the cart, there's no cost for the pickup. It's, it's all included. So you get to get, just sign up and the cart shows up, they bring out the cart and you're good, you're going.
Good to go. Yeah.
I think it's always good to reiterate what's recyclable for us too, because people hear things maybe from Denver or whatever, and they think, oh, I can't recycle this or that because in Denver, you can't recycle that or whatever.
They hear things from everywhere. So that's what we try to get back to the basics and with pictures.
Yeah.
Right? Pictures help and, and some basics about recycling. We really, if people can do the basics, then that's going to move a lot of material out of the landfill. So.
Okay.
Well, there are no additional questions. Okay.
Yeah. What about the tops of the trash cans where the squirrels chew them through? Can they replace those or anything?
Yes. And so.
Chew them through?
Yeah.
That's a thing. And I, I would say Sheridan and Edgewater have a lot of trees and have a lot of squirrels and they will chew through the lid. So if you have a cart that's damaged, if you call Republic and say, I've had squirrels chew through my lid, can I get my cart swapped out? We'll go ahead and get it swapped out for you. We'll get it back to our shop and then we can pop that lid off, put a new one on and get it back into inventory. So.
Okay. All right.
It does happen.
I keep mine in the garage.
Well, and where there are a lot of alleys and when there are alleys and they're sitting out all the time, that's where you see a lot of the damage.
Mine's at the corner of the yard. They chew through the tops of my lid.
So how, how has the customer service been? I don't know who to address this to because I think you get reports. I don't know if you've been reviewing those, but so how has the customer service been the last?
I, I think that it's been pretty solid, pretty consistent. If we have issues, we're either able to refer to Mark or other folks as well. Randy does a lot of work with that as well as addressing issues, working with the customer service folks over there to, you know, figure out, okay, what's behind this, you know, what? Because often it can be a little confusing as to what's going on there. And most of the time we're able to figure it out. I, I was actually just talking with Mark earlier about this. You know, I maybe like complaints or something that raise up to my level, I get maybe one or two a year, maybe. And, and really I just, I, I let Mark know and Mark follows up on them. So we haven't seen much in the way of complaints. We don't, we, I think our, our miss rate is way low. I don't remember off the top of my head, the percentage of.
It's about 99 point.
Yeah. It's like less than a 1% miss rate over a year. So a lot of those kinds of things that we measure and, and that are in the reports and I, I gotta be honest, I haven't looked at one in a little while. But I haven't seen anything, you know, over the past five years of the contract. It wasn't like, you know, like I said, the first five years was a little rough here and it was people getting used to things, right? So it, it took a little while to get there, but we're, we're finding that really it's more of just, you know, it might be a billing question or something. They just don't quite understand. Rarely a miss. And if it is a miss, the way we're set up right now, they can roll back out on Fridays, I think it is. We've got to set it up. So if there is a miss, we can still maybe get them taken care of that week still. So things have been on the customer service side have been pretty decent. Randy, we, we try and let the, the folks at the customer service center know when we maybe have issues that we know are going to affect delivery. So just with the sinkhole that was up on Dartmouth, we notified the, the folks at customer service that hey, you could be, we could have lanes closed down there. They might want to look at their, their pickup route and how that might be affected. So we, we all try and work together on that as well to make sure that we, we still getting people serviced and we minimize any, any kind of issues that we have.
Okay. So on other contracts with other cities, are you taking the same approach and using the same index for the increases?
Yes. So so a couple of things, two contracts that recently just went through, City of Lafayette, we were their service provider and we renewed. We talked about the water sewer trash, but they wanted to stay with the, with the Denver Boulder Greeley, but with no cap and no floor, which could be artificially high, but they, they wanted to stick with that. The city of Louisville, and there, and there's no two-year hold. It's the first year is, is set and then yours. For them, it's a seven-year contract. So two through seven has their rate increase. City of Louisville is on the water sewer trash with no caps and, and no floor. So, so as they are coming up, we are going through the process of converting them to the water sewer trash. So yes, this would be the third contract that has come up that we'll be working through this process.
Okay.
So one thing, if I could take one step back, Mayor, on the customer service piece, just to follow up on some changes. So 10 years ago, the customer service was done in-house at Republic. Then Republic went to a call center approach. And we actually had brick and mortar, three of them around the country. That wasn't very well-liked. We're all consumers. Nobody likes a call center. And so that has morphed over time. And now we actually have a Colorado pod. So it still goes to a central area. They are Colorado residents, but they don't necessarily have to live in Denver or wherever. They, they work remotely. But they are a Colorado pod that take nothing but Colorado phone calls. So that's the customer service piece. However, anytime there's an escalation or if Randy or Devin want to call for an emergency, Susan Roundy, Nicole Montoya and myself, we are the direct contacts locally. So generally Devin or Randy wouldn't necessarily go through a call center. They would call myself or Susan and then we get that information out. So we do have local folks that handle any escalation or something immediate. And then the call center, which is the Colorado pod. So that's how all the customer services handle.
Okay. And if we end up doing a new contract in this, you know, with these kinds of changes, would you communicate that out to that pod?
Yes. Oh, yes. So we have something called a knowledge management tool and they have all the pricing, how the program works and all that information. Right. So they.
That's good to hear. Okay. I have a question for you, Devin. Did, has Mel looked at this to see how it kind of lines up with the sustainability plan? If there's anything we need to consider?
I have not had the discussion with her, but I will before we finalize any contract. Yeah.
Yeah.
But at this point.
If there's anything else she wants to explore at this point in that contract.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, we'll see if there's something that needs to, we need to have considered in there or, or some type of a how they might mesh. I don't know yet. That's, thank you. I'll, I'll make sure I check with her.
Okay. That's all I have. Maybe else have more questions?
I, I thought one more thing, Mark, before we let you go. Could you just relate to council, kind of the discussion we had about carts, kind of where we are with our inventory and that kind of stuff, just as a heads up to them?
Thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah.
So Sheridan has their own carts. They're stamped City of Sheridan. We inventory them, we repair them, we maintain them and we do the deliveries and removals. The inventory right now is low, but it's appropriate. We have about 1,000 participating customers and it doesn't ebb and flow really that much. So I think we're just going to sit on the carts right now. We're running around 50 to 60 carts in each size of what we need, which is appropriate. But if we do get low, I did mention to Devin, that's something I would bring up to him. You wouldn't need a full truckload of carts, which probably runs around $50,000. We would probably need maybe a third of a truck to, to bring that inventory up to appropriate level where we would combine that with an inventory load of Republic carts. So if we get to that point, we would kind of assess what we need. We'd get a quote, we'd get it over the city. We could work that a couple of different ways. We could work that over the term of the remaining contract and put that into the rates or it could be a bill that the city would pay. We could work that out. I think we just kind of let it ride for a little while because I think the inventory is appropriate for a while, but we'll see where it goes.
Until we get all those squirrel-related.
Until we get all those lids at, at, at council member Camacho's house. So I will get them taken care of for you.
Great. Thank you for that update. That was on my list and then I forgot, totally forgot to ask.
Well, appreciate your time. Thank you. Appreciate your partnership.
Thank you. We appreciate you.
So the anticipation, Mayor, would be is that we'll work on, so we're working on some language that we'll, we'll share back and forth. I'll bring Mary Lynn into that part when we start talking modifications to the contract and looking at the new five-year contract. I think we kind of covered most of the big things that will be in there. And so we would anticipate bringing that for council either on the first or second meeting of July. I don't think we have to do this as an ordinance. I mean, there's all kinds of crazy rules. Let's check into that. Or do you know, Mary Lynn?
I do know since I went through this process recently with another client I mentioned earlier. And we do just need a resolution to approve an amendment, fortunately, but I, I had to look as well.
Yeah. But there's so many state regulations around this that I wasn't sure. I couldn't recall. Okay. Okay. So that will make it easy. We just have to do in one reading then. Okay.
Great. I mean, do we have anything else besides our review of agenda items or do you want to?
I'm sorry, Mayor?
Review of agenda items?
Yes, we can do that real quickly. You bet. Let me get to the right place here. Oops. Okay. So on your agenda, come on. On your agenda tonight, we have two resolutions. One is a First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Joint Cooperation Agreement. This is for the Home Consortium Agreement between Arapahoe County and a whole bunch of other municipalities in Arapahoe County. And it has to do with the Community Development Block Grant Program, CDBG, as well as the Home Investment Partnerships Program. Basically, we participate through home and CDBG at the county level with them. Those, these are federal disbursements that come out to the county. They act as the, as the disbursement or, or, or I'm not sure what the term is for the, for those monies. And then we have an IGA with them for that, the administration of those two programs. This amendment is simply switching the, the, the terms of the program, the, the the timeframe of the program to match the federal budget cycle. Right now, most of the cities out there are on January to January and the CDBG funding comes in and whatever that would be July, August, right, right? So it can be, I think it's, it's difficult for the folks at the county then to work on their record-keeping when they're dealing with the cities on one 12-month schedule and the feds and the money coming in on another. This would just simply move both of them to the federal budget calendar. So that's all that this one does. And then later we'll come out with, once that change is made, then they'll, I think later this year, they anticipate they'll do the renewal on the, on the IGA itself. That would include the new, the new timeframes in that. And then the other is an intergovernmental agreement again with Arapahoe County. This is for polling centers. And Jenna, did you want to talk about that at all right now? Or okay?
Thanks, Devin. So I'm actually really excited to be bringing this one forward to you guys. It's an IGA with Rappo County for us to have a voter service and polling center here at City Hall. Currently we do not have a polling center in the city of Sheridan and the closest one is the Inglewood Civic Center. We are part of phase two, so we'll be having the polling center open for four days. It'll be November 1st, November 2nd, November 4th and November 5th. So Friday, Saturday, Monday and Tuesday, we'll have about eight to 10 election judges here and then they will have ballots be able to be printed for any jurisdiction. So I'm pretty excited about it though. We met with them the other day and then they're going to actually have it here in the council chambers. They'll have one door as their entrance and have people come through and then exit out the other door. So.
Great. That was one of my questions because I thought before we talked about downstairs and then I read the agreement and it sounded like they needed things secured and I was like.
Yes. So we're timing with the courts and other council meetings that this room is available. So we'll have this. And then I've also scheduled out another conference room. So the election judges have a place to go like when they want to take breaks and stuff and have some snacks in there for them. But I think it'll be a great benefit to our residents.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
Excited. And that's all.
Okay.
That's it for your. That's it for your regular meeting tonight, Mayor.
Okay. Do we want a little break, or do you want to try to do the manager report now and get through things? Do you guys think? Keep going? Okay.
My my manager's not that long. I think I can get through it. Let me. Oops. Oh, it was right there in front of me. Okay. A few things to bring council up to speed on. So we've been working on our payroll process with the city. Currently, we contract with a former employee that provides most of our payroll processing for us on a contractual basis. This has proved to be, while it has worked well up until this point, it can be a bit of a pinch point, having one person. Her name is Linda, and she does a great job for us. Or if Linda hits the lottery and runs off to Tahiti, who's going to do our payroll process? So we've been looking at some options along those lines, figure out how we can improve that process. What we're doing is we're going to be bringing on a a contract with a group called Puzzle HR. And Puzzle HR will then be our payroll processors. Linda will be maintained with her contract as kind of the quality control point between the city and the payroll processing. And then we're also going to be executing another contract with a software provider called CBiz. CBiz currently provides our timekeeping software and module. We're going to be purchasing new modules from them that will bring on additional HR modules, benefits, basically kind of say, from cradle to grave, under one under one software package that will track all of our employees' payroll, benefits, HR necessities. All and right now, we use three or four different kind of of yes. So the staff has to go around and and transfer this from that or dual entry on those kind of, you know. This will make it hopefully much more efficient. It'll provide us the kind of coverage we need with Puzzle in case, you know, Linda decides she wants to take a vacation ever or things like that. And it's all for less than the cost of hiring an additional FTE for the year. So I think that that's going to put us in a much better position for our payroll processes, much more secure, making sure that we we, you know, whatever happens will will be covered as far as getting our people paid, which is incredibly important. So I don't think that there's much that has to come into council on those, because those are all fairly smaller contracts. So I'll probably execute them much. But if there's any particulars about that that you're interested in, let me know. And and be happy to go over it. But it's base, it's basic payroll stuff.
Sounds like a better experience for the employees. A better experience for the employees.
I think that it should be, I think it'll be have additional information. So we'll have the the good part about this is we'll be able to implement a lot of this change with using the same timekeeping system. So we won't have, folks won't have to learn a new timekeeping system, which is the main interface right there in that. Then they'll get also, they'll get like full compensation types of access to their full compensation picture. So benefits included, everything all in one spot, and they'll be able to see their total compensation, how it all works together, how their benefits, all that, whereas those are kind of in different spots right now at the time. So this, the employee shouldn't really notice anything other than they're going to have access to a lot more information that they didn't have in one spot.
Okay.
One of the other big perks on it, they can get their W two, like instantly instead of waiting for it to get tier and then get distributed. And then if they ever needed it reprinted, they have it at their fingertips. So lots of great.
Is that for council too, or?
Yeah. It'll it it'll be nice. And then one of the other big changes that we're doing this, and this council will notice this.
We'll get yours.
Okay.
We'll make sure you have
There you go.
access to print yours.
We're going to go to biweekly pay periods. Right now, we're bi monthly, and we're going to change when we do this implementation. I'm sorry, I should have mentioned we're targeting September first for full implementation on this. We'll be going to a bi weekly rather than a bi monthly. The bi monthly requires some adjustments, you know, as you go through with different days and different amounts of hours and things like that, which can be difficult, especially if we start looking at different types of job pays, which we have many different kind of job pays that happen in the police department and public works. And keeping track of those different types of hours provides and overtime in general, just when you're you're trying to do that calculation on a bi monthly rather than just every two weeks. It'll simplify everything significantly. And so council will notice that too. Your your paychecks will come out every two weeks instead of bi monthly.
Okay.
We're working on a youth council, thanks to Councilmember Moreno and some of the work that he's done. I've asked our city clerk to be our staff liaison. We're working with Sheridan Rising Together for Equity with some of the youth work that they're doing right now. They've received, I know, some some grant funding from the county health department to do some work and I just wanted to bring council up to speed, just to let you know that what I've asked Jenna to work towards and and Michael helping out as well, is looking at working with the with Sheridan Rising and their youth to look at some bylaws and a scope of work that they can bring back to council for your review and consideration. So want to see what they're interested in learning, what they're interested in doing in their community, how they can work and get their thoughts, how they can work with council, bring that forward to you guys for some consideration, then probably have a dialogue on how that might work. I anticipate, hopefully, at some point, you know, getting them on the budget. Let's get some projects going, that kind of stuff like that. So very exciting. And Jenna and Michael are just kind of getting started on it and and working that up. So more news on that to follow shortly.
Awesome.
Is there anything you guys wanted to add to that? Real quick? Okay. We're working on executing an agreement. I think we're good with that right now, but doing a housing assessment for the city. As you're probably aware, some of the laws that came out of the legislature on this past session, the housing assessments are going to be mandated for all municipalities. We're trying to get ahead of that. We feel that we've engaged a very good vendor on this. They're called EPS. They've done a lot of this work before. One of the best ones, we feel that out in the Denver metro area that do this kind of work. Got them locked down, because I think there's going to be a run on consultants. Andrew, our community development director, has been very keen on getting in front of this, because suddenly everybody's going to need a housing assessment. So we're getting rolling on that and and getting them working on that. The direction I've given so far, but Andrew's really taking the lead on this, but we just need to make sure we're being in compliance with what the regulations are from the state on this. Some of that's still kind of being formulated and figured out. But this process will take the better part of a year to go through all of this. But we want to get started now, get the ball rolling, and then and then work with EPS as we get more direction from the state as well. Covered that. Bike to Work Day is Wednesday, the twenty sixth. You should have an email that Ari sent out to you with the details, but let me just run by real real quick in case. So it's Wednesday, the twenty sixth. We're going to be set up at Wildcat Park from six thirty in the morning till nine AM in the morning. We are going to be giving out Santiago's burritos and Panera Bread coffee. C dot will be there discussing recommendations for the Federal Boulevard Safety Corridor Study. And Lucky Bikes Recycler will be there offering free tune ups and small repairs if your bike needs a little bit of work on it. So if you get the chance, drop by Wildcat Park this Wednesday morning, six thirty to nine. And check out Bike to Work Day. I mentioned this in one of our email, I think it was last week I sent it out. We had great news. We did secure a public buildings electrification grant from the Colorado Energy Office in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. As you recall, in the presentations that we had from Mel, our sustainability coordinator, and with Year Out, who's our energy performance contractor that we're working with. We can use this grant to help offset a number of the capital improvements we want to have for the buildings here. So that's just great news. And really great work by Randy, by Mel, who have been staffing out that effort and and Year Out on working that as well. So I just wanted to mention that in public, give Randy and Mel kudos and our contractors kudos for securing that grant. That's really great news. The mayor mentioned to me just before the meeting that rec center passes, there might be some confusion. I'm going to put together an email. I'll get that out in the next day or two, kind of clarifying what all we have with rec passes and who can use which rec passes where. Right now, through our wellness program, we do allow council and staff and immediate family members to use the Inglewood Rec Center and the Sheridan Rec Center as part of the as on a pass. And we just have punch passes that we can have available at the at the counters there. You tell them you work, you show them an ID, and you can use the rec centers for free and your immediate family members. So I I think that's we've done that for a while, but I think it kind of just was assumed everybody knew, and I don't know that everybody knows that. So I'm going to send out a new email to everybody. I'll make sure that the rec centers are up to speed. I know Inglewood's up to speed, because we we just dealt with that with them. I'll let Eddie know that the intention is, Eddie's always good about making sure we got all the passes that we need over there, making sure that he knows that immediate family members can use the the rec center as well. But I'll I'll put that out. Mayor, that's it.
Great. Thank you. We'll adjourn this meeting at seven oh five PM. And we will move over to our regular meeting. So if you could all get logged in. Can we have a fresh introduction from the interpreter, please?
Yes. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm here with the Community Language Cooperative. We're going to practice language justice today, and we're going to have simultaneous interpretation in English and in Spanish. Once we turn on the interpretation, you're going to see a globe that is going to come up at the bottom of your screen if you're on Zoom, where you're going to be able to find the interpretation function. If you are on your phone or tablet, you will see them on the three little dots where it says more. Hola todos, estoy aquí con la Community Language Cooperative. Vamos a practicar la justicia del lenguaje el día de hoy para que todos podamos hablar y escuchar en el idioma de nuestro corazón. Y tendremos interpretación simultánea en inglés y en español. Cuando aprendamos la interpretación, si estás en Zoom, vas a ver un globo que va a aparecer en la parte inferior de tu pantalla. ¿Dónde vas a poder seleccionar tu idioma? Si estás en tu teléfono o tableta, vas a ver tres puntitos donde dice masa y encontrarás tu idioma. And we can begin interpretation now.
Thank you. I'll call the regular meeting of the Shared City Council to order for June twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. The time is seven oh seven PM. I do have information about absences, and then we can take some votes on excusing absences. I forgot that Mayor Proton Kelly told me that he's in Orlando, but he is online, so I think we can call him present. And then Jay let me know he wasn't going to make it back in time. He had a golf tournament today in the mountains, couldn't quite get back. So I told him that would probably be okay as long as he had let us know. And Desiree says that her dogs are ill. She has to be home with them. So I'll let her know that would most likely be an excused absence as well, but I'll welcome those motions from you all to excuse each person's absence. Yes, but you don't have to do Councilmember Kelly. He is online.
I do have it up on the board. As a night. And Councilmember Kelly does have access to the system, so he's good to go.
Okay, so we're doing it as one one motion. Is that?
Does that work for you?
I think as long as there's no concern about that. All right, so I have a motion from Councilmember Kelly, a second one, Councilmember Camacho. Anybody have any discussion on the absences? Okay, please cast your votes. That motion is approved unanimously. Okay, next tonight, we have the invocation. Is there anyone would like to do the invocation tonight? Usually, we have Jay do that. Looks like he provided one for us last week. So you could just read his, or if you'd like to do your own blessing for the meeting tonight. I'll open it to anyone who's here. I didn't prepare anything. Sorry, so. Okay, then I guess we have no takers. We will skip tonight. We'll move on to the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have any changes to our agenda tonight?
Just to the agenda tonight, Madam Mayor.
Next, we have receive and file the financial reports. I have a motion from Councilmember Moreno and second by Councilmember Camacho. Is there any discussion on the financial reports or any questions? Please cast your votes. That motion is approved unanimously. Next, we have staff reports. City Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of things. So first thing is, we added fans to each station, because it's been really hot in the council chamber, so everyone should have an individual fan if you need it. And then the last thing is, you all should have received a magnet that's for the esports lounge. Eddie stopped by today, and he just wants to make sure that we're pushing that. They would like to see some more participants over there in their esports lounge, then looking at some ideas to bring some stuff out to Sheridan Celebrates and to the National Night Out. So very looking forward to those. And that is all I have.
Okay. Say attorney, do you have anything for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief update. I wanted to let council know that all of the contracts that the city manager reported to you on tonight, those have been reviewed by my office and approved as to form. There's there's been a lot coming through, and everything looks great. I also wanted to let you know that the city manager has invited me to attend department head meetings once a month, which has been really great, because I feel like I have a even better sense of what's going on. So it's been good to get a heads up on on business items coming up, and it's, I just wanted to let you know that I participating in that once a month, and and I really appreciate the city manager's invitation to do that and to be a part of those meetings. So.
Seems like a great idea. Kind of have a sense of what's coming your way, huh? All right, city manager, anything else you want to share?
Nothing else, but happy to answer any questions, Mayor.
Okay, thanks. Chief?
Yeah, I just have one thing. If you look on most of you, all of you that are here, there's a door hanger. It says fireworks investigation. So one of the most frustrating things for our citizens, of course, starts around this time of year, is the fireworks that are going off in the neighborhood. It's also equally as frustrating for the police department, because we get the calls, we respond. Usually, we get there, they're gone, or they see us and they take off. And, you know, it's a it's a relatively low priority call as one compared to everything else that we have going on. Nonetheless, over the years, you know, we just have people that continue to, it's a number one issue for them, bothers their pets, and they really get frustrated with it. So I did this when I was in District Four Southwest Denver with Denver. We had people said, you guys never respond, you're not listening, you're not doing. But we are, but we show up and they're gone, and there's not much going on there. So I came up with this idea for a door hanger that would be, our officers go out to the area where the call came from. We know the general area. We can go out and we can look, and then we can maybe knock on some doors and at least hang a door hanger. The door hanger, as you see, says a fireworks investigation. Basically, it just puts the individuals on notice, number one, the ones who called, let them know that we did go out. We are looking for it. We aren't just saying, no big deal. We're doing what we can. But it also puts them on notice to say, if you see somebody lighting fireworks, give us more information. So it provides the number that they can call, and then we can, you know, hopefully gather more information, maybe go do like a knock and talk or something to the neighbor that's that maybe has younger kids that are doing that, put the adults on notice, or if it's the adults, let them know that fireworks are illegal. So it's not so much of really trying to write tickets, arrest people, anything that nature. It's getting them to stop this. Also, even if, you know, nobody answers the door, and we put this on there, if you're the home that is has someone that's lighting fireworks, and you see this and you go, oh, my neighbors are on notice, and now they may be pointing me out. Hopefully, we'll curtail some of that as well. So the idea is to reduce, I'd ideally like to say eliminate fireworks, but I want to be more realistic. I don't think we'll ever eliminate that. But if we can reduce the number of fireworks complaints that we get and the fireworks going off in the neighborhoods, I believe we'll be better off. Thanks to Commander Martinez, he was able to go ahead and get these printed. It didn't cost us too much money to get these done, but I think it's something that we can show our residents as we had last week or two weeks ago, when we had a resident here complaining, that was one of the complaints. And of course, others have called us as well about that. So it's a step in showing that we are doing something about it. Of course, it has the information, and on the backside, it has it in Spanish, because a lot of our residents do speak Spanish. And of course, our our badge and then our Sheridan Safe logo and reminding people that this is a safe community, and I'm just keeping that reminder out there as well. So I hope that there's something that the council and city manager So um, I hope that there's something that the council and city manager um believe is worthwhile. It didn't cost us too much money to do it, but again, I believe it puts a lot of attention to our citizens who believe that sometimes that we don't pay a lot of attention to that. Because we really do, of course, um the night of July fourth, when it just goes crazy and it goes off all over. We're, we're going to the most important calls during that night, but this is hopefully before and even after the Fourth of July, we can still use these, so. Um, just an idea that we're trying, hopefully it will help a little bit, hopefully it'll help when you have residents that tell you, you know, we called the. Nine one one, we call and no response, nothing happens. Hopefully they'll get this on their door and they'll understand that we are doing something, we're trying to do something, so just a lower priority call in in the grand scheme of things. But nonetheless, very important because it causes a lot of problems, so um open any comments, suggestions or feedback.
It's something worthwhile trying and like you said, to give a little visibility to the fact that you were there and you did respond, I don't think that can hurt.
Can we get that listed on the website as well?
Yes, yes, we're going to work with our social media person, um Amy and uh make sure that this gets put out there and then also, so our neighbors see it. Even if they don't get one of these on their door, they know that we are doing this, so um great council member, we'll definitely make sure that gets out to social media as well. If there's other places besides social media, were you thinking you wanted to get it?
I I think social media, just in case they don't receive it and they've. Maybe they can go to the website and find the number or even learn how to report it.
Okay, absolutely, we'll definitely do that, we'll see about getting that posted hopefully as soon as tomorrow. Just want to make sure that you all knew what was um going on with this and what it was about before we put it out and then you're like, I don't know anything about it, so.
Great, Betty have any questions for staff? We'll move along then. Next, we have the minutes of the regular city council meeting of June tenth, twenty twenty-four. Have a motion from council member Moreno and a second from council member Lopez, any questions or corrections to the minutes? Please cast your votes. That motion is approved unanimously, next we have the consent agenda authorized disbursements that have been or will be made from June first, twenty twenty-four. To June fifteenth, twenty twenty-four in the amount of five hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents. Per the referenced and attached transfer of funds. I have a motion from council member Kelly and a second from council member Moreno. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Please cast your votes. That motion is approved unanimously. Next, we have items for individual consideration. They have resolutions, resolution sixteen dash twenty twenty-four. First Amendment to Intergovernmental Joint Cooperation Agreement and Home Consortium Agreement between Arapahoe County, Colorado. And City of Sheridan, Colorado, relating to the conduct of the Community Development Block Grant Program. And Home Investment Partnerships Program for Grant Years twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-four. There's a motion from council member Camacho and a second from council member Kelly. Any discussion or questions on resolution sixteen? Please cast your votes. Motion is approved unanimously, then we have Resolution seventeen. A resolution of the city council of the city of Sheridan, Colorado approving an intergovernmental agreement with Arapahoe County. For operation of voter service and polling centers in the city of Sheridan. Have a motion from council member Moreno and a second from council member Camacho. Any questions on Resolution seventeen? Please cast your votes. That motion is approved unanimously. Next is mayor's choice. Just wanted to give a heads up that I am going to be out of town, July twenty-eighth through August fourteenth. So I'll miss the eight fourteen meeting, also send an email so everybody can have so a little reminder. So I'll also miss um eight eight Sheridan celebrates and eight nine can do. Um, anybody else have anything they want to bring up tonight? Okay. Uh, public comment, is there anyone um here who would like to speak to council tonight? Okay, we'll move on and adjourn this meeting at seven twenty and we'll have our Sheridan redevelopment authority meeting next. That was seven twenty, I don't know if I said, anyway, well, uh we adjourned at seven twenty, we'll. Call to order the Sheridan redevelopment agency meeting at seven twenty. Everyone could sign in. We have all members present except for council member Whittaker and council member Stang. Our first item is the approval of minutes, minutes of the SRA regular meeting of May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Have a motion from member Kelly and a second by member Moreno. Any discussion on the minutes? Please cast your votes. That is approved unanimously, and then we have the financial reports, receive and file financial reports. Have a motion from board member Moreno and a second from board member Camacho. Any discussion on the financial reports? Not seeing any, let's vote on that one. That motion is approved unanimously, then we have the approval of disbursements, authorized disbursements for May twenty twenty-four. In the amount of one hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-one cents that have been or will be made for expenses referenced below. Legal expenses, none, other professional services, twenty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-six cents. City support services, one hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and one dollars, other expenses, seven hundred, two dollars and eighty-five cents. And then also authorized disbursements for June twenty twenty-four in the amount of one hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars and six cents. That have been or will be made for expenses referenced below, legal expenses, none, other professional services, nine thousand, four hundred and forty dollars and eight cents. City support services, one hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and one, other expenses, seven hundred, eighty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. I have a motion from board member Moreno and a second from board member Kelly. Any questions or concerns on the disbursements? Okay, please cast your votes. That motion is approved unanimously. And we have new business, the pinnacle report for April twenty twenty-four.
Good evening, everyone, um we are on page seventeen of the SRA board packet. Um, I did want to report, um and this also is true for the city financials, we did have um a large audit payment. Um, for the city, they saw sixty-one thousand, um for the SRA, we did um get approximately uh. Seventy thousand in public improvement fee and a hundred and forty thousand in sales tax revenue. So um, we do a lot of our audits and we don't find anything, which is wonderful, that's what we want to do. But this is why we do them is so that um this audit in particular, I can't say who it is, but we do um. This is a retailer that we do every three years and every three years we get paid very handsomely, so. Yes, so this is why we do it, so um it's always good to see, um as far as expenses, no changes from last month. Um, Dollar Tree is still working away um on their improvements. Um, Teriyaki madness, I was talking to uh Jess um and Andrew, not a lot happening yet. So don't know when that will be opening and then the Starbucks will be closed um June or July for remodel. So uh hopefully they will drive over to Dutch Brothers or maybe to the Starbucks and Target. Um, I hope they don't leave, but um yeah, so that will be good to see what that looks like once that's open. Um, our pledge revenues, if you'll look at, um they're a little bit higher, but that includes those audit payments. Um, so you'll see year to date, it's ten point eight four percent higher, so that's always good to see that. Um, for our continuing compliance, we did file the first quarter compliance report that was due May fifteen. And then the twenty twenty-three audit, um I'm going to have to change what I've been reporting a little bit. The auditors are running a little behind, we do have a draft of the SRA audit. We are going to get the draft of the city audit this week. But per state statute, we are required to send the board a draft of the audit. Per state statute, they have to then. Approve that by July thirty-first and it has to be submitted to the state. What I will tell you is the draft that's going to be coming out on June thirtieth will be the very first draft. It will not have been reviewed by me, it will not have been reviewed by any other city staff or attorney, so you are more than welcome to read it, it's. But you will get another chance to see the final draft, it will be in the packet of that July twenty-second meeting, so. Um, so just note that if you do review it, that there there usually isn't many changes because they're pretty. They know what they're doing, so they're just running a little behind this time, so I just wanted to let you know, so that we will be sending that out this week. And then we will have it on the July twenty-second to for approval. So I think that is all I've got, I'm happy to answer questions.
It's great, it's always the highlight of the month.
Yes.
I can tell you anecdotally, my husband and I did go to Target instead for our coffee, so.
That's wonderful.
Alright, anybody else have any questions about the pinnacle report? No, okay, then we'll adjourn, the time is seven twenty-six PM, thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Guys, have a good night.
Thanks, you too.